All right, good morning, everyone. Call to order a meeting of the Kent County Board of Commissioners, and we will start with the roll call. Madam Clerk.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners Woodin, Teal, Sparks, Ponstein, Pakla, Oliver King, Merchant, McLeod, LaGrande, Coleman, Hildenbrand, Hennessy, Vice Chair Green, Diaz, Commissioner Diaz, DeBoer, Burl, Boujack, Breevy, Baker, Antor, Chair Stack.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have five members, or you have sixteen members present, five members absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. I will now call in Commissioner Coleman to give us or present us the invocation.
Good morning. I wish a happy Easter to all who celebrate. This morning, I've got a good friend of mine, Brian Dix, who works at an organization here in Kent County called Horizon Education Network that's doing online theological education support for fifty schools, I think it's fifty, fifty schools in twenty-seven countries around the world. So, one of those many gems of an organization right here in Kent County, doing great work globally. So, Brian, welcome.
Thank you. It is a great privilege for me to lead you in this invocation. Let's pray. Gracious Father, the events of this week alone in our country and in our world remind us of the weight of responsibility placed upon the shoulders of our elected officials. And each time they meet, they're making decisions that affect hundreds of thousands of lives. And we thank you for each of them, for their willingness to serve, their commitment to work together for effective solutions, and their individual and unusual, individual and collective intelligence, yet continue to do, to continue to do their jobs well. They need two specific things: wisdom and unity. Wisdom goes beyond intelligence, and in the holy scriptures that you have given us, you've commanded us that when we need wisdom, we are to ask you for it with faith and confidence, and you will give it. So, we ask, not just for individual wisdom, but for collective wisdom. Wisdom that goes beyond one individual, and even beyond the group, wisdom from on high. We also ask for unity. Bring this group together to a point of settled peace on each point, so that each divergent voice is heard, considered, and the best decision is made. Finally, we are aware that many in this country live without, in this county, live without hope. But this weekend, many of us will celebrate a life-altering, historic series of events, the death, burial, and resurrection of Jesus. Just the thought of a dead man walking out of a tomb fills us with tremendous confidence and hope. So, we ask you that hope would replace despair in the lives of our friends and neighbors, and that the work that this group does would lead to the flourishing of our society. I've been invited to invoke your presence, oh God, over this assembly. So, it is in the powerful name of this risen Messiah, Jesus, that we ask these things. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that invocation. All right, we will move to our item of special order of business. And this morning, we have with us Mr. Randy Thalen from The Right Place to give us a ten-minute presentation.
Well, good morning. Thanks for having me back again this year for an update on what's taking place in the economy through the lens of The Right Place. Came here each of the last three years since taking the baton from very close and continuing to march forward at The Right Place, trying to grow this economy from a jobs perspective, from a wage perspective, and ultimately from a tax-based perspective. So, I'm going to go through these slides pretty quickly. If you have any questions, certainly we'll save time for the end. And if you have questions afterwards, if you read through the information, you have some follow-up question, happy to take it. Just to set the framework, recall, we've restructured The Right Place around three primary pillars of people, place, and prosperity. That's the, that's a modern look at economic development. It starts with people, it starts with talent. That's why we do the work we do. It's less about the steel and concrete, it's more about the people that fill those buildings. It's also about place, and how do we make our communities all across Kent County and across the region, how do we make them attractive, interesting places for people to choose to live and build their career or start their business? That's an effort that Tim Roz leads for us, and he'll be up here in a moment to share a little bit about their work. And then prosperity is the more traditional economic development conversations that we talk about, jobs and investment. You may have seen, yesterday, we announced a project with Amway where they're bringing their R and D and some production work from California and bringing it here. So, that type of work on a consistent basis. We do our work over three-year strategies. We set goals aligned to that strategy. We're about one year, actually not quite one quarter, so one and a quarter years in, and we are having a tremendous economic boom here, frankly, coming out of COVID, coming out of that sort of awkward economic time period. But across the board, we're ahead of plan on job creation, well ahead of plan on investment, both from a business standpoint and a community development perspective. And the jobs we've been able to assist are ahead of pace, too, at about twenty-eight bucks an hour on average. So, really pleased with the growth we're seeing there. And the types of projects we're assisting really reflect the diverse economic dynamic that we've enjoyed for many years and really enhancing that. So, here you'll see a collection of companies that are growing here, Cascade Castings, Aspen Surgical brought forth some work from Tennessee back up here closer to their home base, Factory Yards, which is a project Tim Roz has led from a housing perspective, Navico is an expansion over, and Lowell Area and Snack Craft is a new company that continues to grow based out of Greece. And then here, we've got a collection of tech companies and manufacturing companies. So, Payload, CMS, and Ticker are maybe companies you've not heard of before, but they're growing rather quickly in the tech space. Gen Tech certainly is a strong employer throughout the region. They've opened up a tech center here in Kent County. And Howie's Hockey Tape is one of my favorites. It's a classic West Michigan entrepreneurial story where they saw a need to improve the hockey tape, and next thing you know, they're selling product all around the world. And I believe every NHL team uses their, the variety of their products. So, it's kind of fun to see that right here in our backyard, and they're growing. We've grown our business retention outreach. Sometimes those projects like Snack Craft that come from Greece gather all the headlines, but the core of our growth in the region comes from our existing business space. So, over the last year, we've met with about three hundred and fifty, actually three hundred and sixty-eight companies across the region, face-to-face, asking about their growth plans and how we might be able to assist. You can see some of the outcomes there. We also, we'll talk more about tech in a second, that's gathered a lot of the headlines of late, too, but manufacturing remains core to who we are. We have a manufacturing services arm at the organization led by Terry Hasink, and he's brought a wealth of manufacturing experience forward. And this is where we get our hands dirty. We go into these companies as consultants, help them understand technology shifts that are taking place within manufacturing, helping frankly through our Manufacturing Council and other efforts, the great work that is taking place in some of our larger manufacturing companies, and try to help translate down deeper and deeper into our manufacturing base. You can see that we've, we've been aggressively working on those type of consulting projects throughout the region. We've also launched our ten-year tech strategy. Our goal is to get our economy to ten percent tech by, in the next, well, we have eight years now left in that strategy. We're well on our way with over five thousand tech jobs taking, growing here, according to BLS data. And those tech jobs are not Google or Facebook-type of jobs that we might think of, but every company has become a tech company. The county, in a lot of ways, has become a tech organization. And so, that type of employment growth is really taking root across the region. And we're seeing a lot of our partners step up in a major way. Davenport University's launched an aggressive cybersecurity program that's really taken roots. Grand Valley State is launching a new college of computing, taking what had been their engineering and computing college and splitting it in two, frankly allowing both to grow. And so, when we think about STEM careers and how do we grow our talent pipeline, it's a big, bold move by the university. I've been proud to lead the, co-chair the effort for the search for that dean. And GRCC has two major wins. They've got a partnership with Intel on an AI project, and they just picked up another designation as well. So, across the spectrum, and frankly, at the Kent ISD, where I helped, co-chaired an effort there to rethink their career tech education model, trying to double the output of career CTE students. Again, tech is a, is a big focus. It's where our students want to go and study, that's where employers are in high demand for it. So, we think we've been on some good matchmaking there. I'm going to ask Tim Roz to come forward and talk a little bit about our community development work, and I'm going to embarrass him a touch. Tonight, he's picking up an award as one of the dealmakers of the year for West Michigan, having led a project called Factory Yards. And if you know Tim, he's a very humble guy, and I think he deserves this recognition tonight. But, Tim, would you talk about the next couple of things?
Good morning, Tim.
Good morning.
Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you for that. That was awkward. Good morning, everyone. You know, as you know, over the past couple of years, we've, we've experienced tremendous influx of available funds and funding coming, you know, through state and federal resources as we emerged from COVID. And one of the, one of the, the goals that we had coming out of this was, you know, Randy said, you know, "I want us to get an outsized portion of those funds to fund, to fund West Michigan projects." So, we've partnered with the county, we've partnered with other counties. You can see, you know, some of the results of that work already. Essentially, what it comes down to is about thirty million dollars we've been able to capture here in West Michigan for West Michigan projects. I'm proud to say that twenty-three of the, twenty-three million of that thirty million dollars is going straight into Kent County projects right here in our county. So, so a lot of great work we're doing there. Runs a gamut of projects from industrial site readiness, which we'll talk about in a second, to public placemaking projects, trailhead projects, working with Ben Swayze and Kent County Parks Department on some projects as well. So, again, on this, on the more, on the industrial site readiness side of the conversation, unfortunately, we've continued to have this conversation in West Michigan over the past several years. We're down now realistically about two percent vacancy when it comes to industrial vacancy in our area. Why is that important? As our businesses expand and we attract more business to the area, they need physical space to locate. And so, that, that continues to be a pinch point for, you know, not just for, for The Right Place, but, you know, for our community in general. And so, my partner in crime, Travis, and I have, have continued to work on that, on that, on that initiative. You can see some of the results from that here. Most recently, yesterday, Nationwide Organization CoStar, which manages commercial real estate throughout, throughout the country, actually named West Michigan and Grand Rapids as the tightest of the fifty industrial markets that they track across the nation. And so, that tells you sort of the, the level of, of tightness in the market right now and, and the reason, and the need to, to continue to invest in, in industrial site readiness work. So, you know, talk about people?
Sure. Yeah, so that, that recognition of sorts from CoStar that Tim references is sort of good and bad. It reflects the work that we've done on the job side of things, but if we don't address the site development sort of bottleneck, we won't continue to see the growth. We've talked about that here before, and as Tim said, we've got about twenty-two million dollars now ready to deploy to really, to bring about fifteen hundred acres available for business park-type development. So, excited about that. And hopefully, in time, as that infrastructure gets built, we'll have sort of eased that bottleneck, if you will. I mentioned we lead with people. A couple of things, Torita Johnson on our team who leads this effort has launched an assessment tool for employers. It continues to be the biggest challenge for companies is how do they find and keep the best and brightest talent? And so, we've got a tool that helps them identify sort of what's working within their company, maybe where they have weaknesses, and we can help put some programming together there. And we touched on this last year childcare survey. We partnered with Vibrant Futures, and it's, it's no secret, this is a real hindrance for getting people back into the workplace, particularly women back into the workplace, and beginning to find some solutions and encourage companies to be part of that solution. So, I'm doing some work there as well. I'll just close by saying, when we do all of those retention visits, just under four hundred visits, we, we capture some high-level data and a couple trend lines that I think as you go forward with your planning at the county, I saw the county treasurer in the back corner, the growth prospects for our region remain strong. As long as we make sure the bottlenecks like, you know, site development for, for industrial and business growth, housing growth as well, as long as we can address those bottlenecks, we'll continue to see opportunities for growth as the companies across the board are showing increasing sales at a growing rate, seventy-two percent this year, which is up over last year, and roughly sixty percent expect to grow, expand their business, whether that's physical improvements to their building or additional hiring. So, with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
All right, thank you. I think you made it and then some. Excellent. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Stack. Randy, thanks, thanks for being here today. I don't think anyone can dispute the success of, of The Right Place. When you started your presentation, you highlighted the three words, people, place, and prosperity. And when we use those as measurement tools, to me and to you, they could mean vastly great things. How does The Right Place look at that and balance it where it's just not targeted at the same old stuff over and over again? I mean, we're looking for a place, I'm assuming a place to put a, you know, a new business. Does that mean a place that's already got infrastructure, or a place that has none and the expense? And obviously, prosperity to me and you are two different things. And, you know, it may mean something of someone sitting in their backyard, peace and quiet, and other people want that grand view of, of this great county. So, any comments and thoughts? And I know it's a loaded question. It could go a lot of ways, but it's just...
No, I mean, we're, we like to believe we're pretty thoughtful about that, Commissioner. We, you know, people really comes down to how do we make sure everybody across Kent County and the, and the region that we serve has the opportunity to reach their fullest and highest potential here? And that's a blend of making sure their training is available and readily available at approachable, affordable price, and it's aligned with the job opportunities that we have. And then we work to make sure those job opportunities that are a quality that can provide, you know, part of quality of life is the income that you can earn to enjoy some of the things that we have in this region. So, we start there on the people side. Place is a combination of, you know, the business site development that Tim just referenced, as well as the grants that he talked about that are in Sparta and Cedar Springs and throughout the county, that just provide a little bit of surprise and delight moments as you go from community to community. And we work very closely with those local jurisdictions to make sure what we're suggesting aligns with their master plans, aligns with their zoning, and is something that they're seeking. So, yeah, we, we work awfully hard to make sure there's alignment, you know, as we, regional, county, local jurisdiction, we try to make sure we're aligned along the way.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Randy, thanks for being here. I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about the process by which business members, community members engage with The Right Place. In particular, I'm curious, when we think about the ability of an organization to go after grants at the state level and federal level, like the Inflation Reduction Act or similar, sometimes access to that information dictates whether or not they go for it.
Correct.
Sometimes capacity dictates whether or not they go for it. And some of our small businesses, minority-owned businesses, may not have the same level of capacity or dedicated staff to do that kind of work. So, I'm curious if you could talk a little bit about what that workflow looks like, whether it's a reach out to you, or whether it's a reach into those companies kind of process.
Yeah, so for us, a couple of things that we've done over the last few years, because when I first came to town, it was in the midst of that Inflation Reduction Act and ARPA and what have you. There was that, what I would describe as the beginning of this wave of federal money that I've never seen. I've done this now for almost thirty years. I've never seen anything like this wave, and I don't think we'll ever see it, at least in my career, again. But it was painfully obvious, there was a painfully obvious, there was a U.S. EDA innovation grant that talked about blending economic development work with innovation with underrepresented organizations and populations and business groups. And it became painfully obvious that our community wasn't really ready for that. We pursued it, it wasn't the right timing for us. But subsequent to that, I frankly, I went to some of those organizations, talked with them at length, and there was capacity issues. I then went to some of the area foundations and said, "Look, if we invest, if we, if you invest a little bit of money in these types of groups, you can pick the groups, you can pick the projects. I'm just saying there's a gap." And several of those foundations did put planning money in place that frankly, I don't, I'm not doing this to take any credit, I'm not going to name the organization, but one of them has picked up several million dollars of state appropriation and additional grant, and now some philanthropy, and it all germinated from that planning grant that took place two and a half, three years ago. So, we've had our radar up for that. It's, it's a challenge, I mean, it's a, it's a bit of an Achilles' heel for our region and Kent County that we don't have some of our diverse organizations at a level that they can, they have that sort of capacity. And so, we've got to build that up. And so, what we've done is look for those opportunities, try to partner when appropriate. So, the childcare effort was a clear partnership arrangement. We have a housing effort that we've done with the Chamber, the Urban League, and several other organizations to try to help make sure we're all moving together. But it is, that's definitely on our radar. We've made, we've made a lot of effort to try to bring, bring some of those opportunities forward.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning.
Good morning.
I really appreciate all the work you guys have done over the years. You guys have been just fantastic to watch. And Tim, we have a little relationship going. He's been very helpful with some of the concerns I've had. But you guys have been a well-oiled machine, and you're right, the capacity issues here, and we're extremely tight. And I know you guys are aware of the fact we're short on conference, exhibit, trade show space. And that's one of those glaring things that we've experienced. And I know Tim's been working really hard to try to find some momentum or some, some way of getting something here in West Michigan, because we are literally turning away a lot of, a lot of money.
Yeah.
And a ton of people. So, I just wanted to encourage you guys to continue looking. And it's, it's cool to be in this city, because we got a little bit of everything. But that's one of the issues that we're, we're short on right now. And the hotel conference spaces just don't cut it. We need about a hundred thousand square feet minimum type of space. So, when I say we, I mean the county.
Yeah.
Since the Delta Plex closed, they used to pick up all that stuff. So, I just want to keep encouraging you guys to keep looking and trying to get that piece done.
No, thank you. Will do. And we work closely with Doug Small and his team at Experienced GR II on that front. Once Tim gets over the glow of the award tonight, maybe he can get back to work on that topic.
All right, thanks.
I just, Tim's fun.
Commissioner LaGrande.
Thank you, Chair. Randy, I wonder if you could, I want to go back to the, the community development investment as one of the key metrics that you're tracking. And I guess we talked about it a little bit with those sort of ARPA projects, but can we take a little deeper, like, you know, without that sort of money, what are you looking to invest? What, what are you looking for? Where's that money coming from?
So, yeah, I mean, the money always makes the headlines, and the grants always make the headlines. But the, the work that Tim and Travis and others do on the team go much deeper than that. So, we've done, I mentioned a moment ago, some housing analysis with various communities throughout Kent County to determine what that need is, back to your comment, sir, about aligning with local needs. And then, we have a tool frankly that Tim has just deployed where we can help imagine. So, if there's a, a site in, let's just say downtown Sparta, that they're trying to reimagine, we have a tool now that can kind of visualize that really quickly. It can help understand what's the economics of that project, what rents would they have to get, what would the expense to build, and very quickly start to assess how we might go market that. We've created something called Developer Day. Well, first of all, Tim and Travis and I meet with developers from all across the region and now stretching beyond into the Detroit and Chicago markets, talking about the opportunities that we have here to, to build more housing in particular. And so, we market that way, just like we've, you know, historically, we've marketed to companies around the world. We still do that. Now, we're marketing to developers both locally, regionally, and to a degree nationally, because we have more, more demand than we have supply, and it's probably more than we can handle with our development crew in the region. So, we have Developer Day now where we start with about two hundred people. Last year, we do a little program, but then everybody gets on a bus, and we tour different communities all throughout the county about what opportunities are out there. So, it's really about helping promote, market, and make aware of the opportunities. And then there are financing tools, brownfield tools, other TIF mechanisms that can help on the housing front today that are, you know, even the housing TIF, which is brand-new, is we're trying to help developers understand, communities understand that, and accelerate that learning curve.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boujack. No? All right, anyone else? Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. I thank you both for the presentation. A lot of these projects are very exciting. The, the Gen Tech's new building, the Factory Yards, which is like a couple of, I don't know, walking distance from my house. It's going to be transformational for sure for our, for our community, for our county. I'm wondering, kind of also, similar to what Commissioner LaGrande was asking about, you know, now that ARPA is basically gone, and that we're probably not going to see anything like that from the state or federal government anytime soon, what are some possibilities for how we can, I guess I'll be a little bit more specific. So, if I'm not mistaken, the last two years, I believe we've gotten about two and a half million dollars from the state from the cannabis excise tax. And I'm wondering, like, is there, would you suggest, for example, setting aside some of that money to be put back into economic development? Because, you know, Factory Yards is huge, right? It's going to be transformational. But I'm also thinking of other smaller projects, more smaller locations throughout the county that would, you know, really benefit from fifty thousand, a hundred thousand dollars. That would be transformational for them. So, do you, what are your thoughts? What is The Right Place's thoughts on kind of focusing or doing a little bit more when it comes to, you know, these smaller projects that aren't maybe as big as Factory Yards, but would also be transformational for the county?
Yeah, I might ask for a little bit more time to reflect on that, but my, my initial reaction would be there are a couple of gaps that we see bubbling up. As, you know, interest rates remain high, construction costs remain high, it's created a dynamic where development deals that were penciling out and working three, four years ago now do not. And so, a little bit of intervention with an incentive, because housing demand keeps outpacing housing supply irrespective of interest rates. And so, we have to find a way to keep that momentum on the housing side going. So, a little bit of, of intervention there could go a long way in addressing sort of the sustained high interest rates and the sustained inflation of construction costs. So, that would be one. You know, we also have a gap in the region from a, from a tech standpoint in terms of early-stage capital. And, you know, the southeast portion, you know, southeast side of the state is, is much more developed in that regard. And we've got great programs here, don't get me wrong, Start Garden's got a great ten-year track record. Spartan Innovations has brought some new things to bear in this region, but there's a need to do more. And if you've been on, you know, Commerce Street, and it comes to mind on the, sort of down by the arena, that's become what we call E-commerce Street now. There's several tech companies that are populated there. But to find a way to address that need, I think those would be the two that stand out. But if you don't mind, I'd like to reflect with my team a little bit more, see if they have better, they probably have better ideas than I do.
For sure.
But those are two gaps that I know we've observed, and we're watching pretty carefully.
Definitely. I'll sort of go back with you on that. And then, my only other question is, I've seen, you know, some of these, I guess, bigger cities have been struggling with basically empty buildings, empty office buildings that after the pandemic, a lot of people just switched to working from home or hybrid. Another, we keep hearing supposedly about this big crash that's supposed to come in the real estate market. Is, are you really not that concerned when it comes to the Grand Rapids area on that? Is that more of a bigger city issue?
No, it was, it is something we're, we're watching very carefully. It is, it is more acute in bigger cities, no question. We don't have quite the friction. You know, I moved back to West Michigan from Denver a few years back, and, you know, to get from point A to point B in Denver today is, is much more of a headache and a hassle. So, the inertia, the friction to get somebody to consider working back in the office versus home is much higher. And so, you see that in Chicago, you see that in the San Francisco, LA, the major, what I consider like NFL cities, tier three cities like ours, tier two and a half, which I like to say, or regions like ours. You know, it's, we're a fifteen-minute commute time. No matter where you're driving, it's fifteen to twenty minutes, and that's, that is not quite the barrier. We're not as over-officed as some of these other markets are as well. So, you're seeing the major cities that have, if you saw the show The Office with Michael Scott and all those folks, they, you know, those satellite offices that you see populated some markets, those are tougher to get people to come back into the office, whereas here, we're not as, we're not as much of a satellite office location. So, it's a little bit more owner, you know, locally owned, a little bit more leadership-driven. So, we don't have quite that dynamic. It is something we're watching, and we can see it out the windows. We have buildings that are underperforming, and we're, we're, we're working on it. We have some ideas of how we might flip some of these to residential, but that, that takes time, and it also takes some resource.
For sure. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, if not, again, thank you, Randy, Tim. Thank you for your presentation. Certainly, thank you for your partnership.
Yeah, thank you.
You're a critical part of this community, and our success is in no small measure due to the persistent work that you guys have done. So, thank you for that.
If I might just say one last thing, surprised we didn't put it in our slide deck, but we, one great element of The Right Place, and much of this goes to Burgett's leadership, and thanking her for that. But we just celebrated a milestone late last year, fifty thousand jobs that we've helped create over the, since the onset of The, of The Right Place. And a lot of regions across the country, organizations like ours tend to start, stop, start, and stop, and they don't have that sustained effort. And I think it speaks volumes about the leadership of, of West Michigan to keep The Right Place going and going forward, and we'll continue to do it as long as you'll have us. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. All right, we'll now move to the next item on the agenda, which is public comment. This is the first opportunity for public comment in the course of this meeting. This opportunity is intended to be only for comments addressing specific items that are on the agenda. So, if you have an item that's on the agenda that you should address, you may do so at this point. Please identify yourself, identify your name and your address, and you have up to three minutes. All right, I see none. So, we will move to the next item on our agenda, which is item number seven, and I will call on Commissioner Coleman.
Mr. Chairman, I move the consent agenda.
Well done. Thank you. Is it supported? Supported by Commissioner Hildebrand. Conversation, questions, comments? If not, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Woodin.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
LaGrande.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Hennessy. Vice Chair Green. Hennessy.
Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Diaz.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Boojak.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yeses, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to item 8A, and I will call on Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. It is my pleasure to move adoption of Resolution 42 of today's date to authorize the issuance of general obligation limited tax notes, Series 2024, to support delinquent 2023 real property taxes. It comes to us from the Treasurer's Office.
Thank you. Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Coleman. Questions or comments? I see our Treasurer, Peter McGregor, is here. If you have questions or comments with respect to this motion, Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to briefly mention, so we talked about this, I had a question on this in finance, about in this higher-interest rate environment, you know, these, these notes being issued and the, the costs associated. And so I just want to express my appreciation to the Treasurer for continuing to kind of keep a watchful eye on that and the, the potential of funding this, you know, kind of internally in the future, if we remain in a high-interest rate environment. It's something I know he continues to look at, but this is a significantly great service for our, our local units of the government to, just for their cash flow. So much appreciated, all the work to make this happen.
Would you like me to respond to that?
Yes.
Thank you. I, I think we, we spoke at the Finance Committee hearing about our ability to pay this off early, and that's what's going, what's going to happen this time around. Like last year with the interest rates that went up, we also were able and are, will be able to pay it off early rather than a fixed rate at a fixed time. So continuing to look at those, and it, this is a wonderful service for our local communities and our millages. This year, we are about $2.5 million more with our settlement than we were last year. This is something that we have zero control over. This is the settlement with the local communities, the delinquent taxes that come over to us. We make them whole, but this year we're at $2.5 million more. We're at approximately $19.6 million with our settlement. Last year, we were closer to 16, 16.1. And so the bond that I'm requesting is up to 25 million. We won't need that much, but by the time I get in front of this, this body, we don't have the final figures at this point. But it looks like it's going to be closer to 19. We'll wait to take that note out come May 1st. By that time, it'll be probably closer to 17, because we, we get a lot of money in between now or April 1st and May 1st. So it, it'll probably be closer to 17 million that, that note will be on.
All right. Good. Commissioner Boojak.
Thank you, Chair Stuck. I'll thank the Treasurer's Office for the work that you do. A question regarding a trend. With delinquent taxes over, say, the past five, six years, do we see a trend that reflects on the economy? Are we doing better, doing worse? And how does that, how does that work?
Yeah, it, it goes up and down. So I, I think our high watermark for the county was back in 2008. And remember how bad, how poor the economy was there? Our settlement or delinquent taxes back in 2008 was $36 million. So our low point was 2020. Nope, excuse me, was 2021, and that was at 15.2. Last year, we were at 16.1. This year, we're at 19.5. So it's gone up, and those are millions. So it is going back up. There's a lot of cash out there, lot of resources out there. The state of Michigan had a wonderful resource called My Half that helped us out, helped this county out in paying delinquent property taxes, close to $2 million. And that's delinquent property taxes that are one, two, three, four years old, that, that was out there for, for our citizens in this county. So that helped out. That has dried up now. So that resource is gone, but we have, as you all know, Kent County is one of the best places to find and partner with a lot of nonprofit organizations that are around that, that help out our citizens.
All right. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Stuck. Treasurer McGregor, thanks for being here today. Just an overall question. Obviously, this is paying something off. There's a lot of restrictions on what you can and cannot do when it comes to the revenue side and investing funds. Is there a limit on how far out you can go?
In, in specific to these, this note or in general?
Well, both.
Okay. To this note, it's a two-year note. All our notes have been two-year notes. And in general, it depends on the cash flow needs of this county. And when our departments need cash, payroll, when you make decisions to spend money, we have to be prepared for that. So it's a balance between cash flow needs and how far out we want to invest. Most of our investments are less than, I would say, three years. We have a few that might be out a little bit further, but most of it is going to be, I would say, six months to a year investments. And that's where the best rates are right now.
All right. No other questions or comments? Commissioner Diaz.
Sorry, just a quick question. To kind of follow up Commissioner Boojak's question, is this more of a situation of just increased property value as the tax delinquency is going up? Or are you seeing a trend of like more people are having issues paying their property taxes?
Both, probably. I, I wish there was one issue that I could focus on and say, this is the one I need to deal with. But these are delinquent taxes from the locals. So the locals aren't collecting the taxes within the, the one-year time limit, because after one year, March 1, it gets turned over to the county and we become the collection agent. So we have zero control over that. But what is causing that? And we talk about it with my team all the time. Why is this going up? Lack of, of potential resources. The economy's strong, you know? The employment is strong. Increase in property taxes, it's probably part of the, the issue. It's not the complete issue, but it, it's probably part of it. I mean, the last two years, the, your, the interest rates, as high as they are, the property tax inflation rate was 5%, which is what proposal I capped it at, 5% or whatever interest rate, whatever's lower. And so your property taxes rate has gone up 5% in the last two years, each year. So yeah, it is, it's, it's, that's part of the problem as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boojak.
Can I come back?
You get, you get a second.
Thank you, Chair.
It's the last.
I think it's important for the public to know that the Treasurer's Office does everything that it can to work with these individuals that have delinquent taxes. And can you speak to that? So just as a reminder, because I don't think you get enough credit for the difficult work that you do in contacting these individuals and trying to work with them. It's not like you're the evil tax collector that shows up, you know, with a SWAT team to get money. It's like you actually go out to these individuals and then say, hey, what, what's going on? What can we do to help you? And can you?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. It, it seems like these past three weeks, I've been knocking on a lot of doors, and it's not campaigning. I, I'm going up and knocking and letting people know, trying to figure out what the problem is. Because last thing I want, I, I don't want anybody's home. That, that, I, I just want to do my statutory duty and what a judge tells me to do, and that's collect the taxes. So if we can find resources and, and work out payment plans, I'm all about that. So I'm knocking on doors, and a lot of people don't even know they're in this situation, which surprises me, because we send out, by statute, like eight different types of notifications, and then we send out quarterly statements ourselves. So they've been getting dozens of statements over the last two and a half years. Knocking on doors, that's what I do, and I, I think my, my staff thinks I'm a little overboard on this, because, you know, there's some people who don't want to see someone at their door saying, hey, you owe the government taxes. I mean, it's, it's a tough situation. But I think I, I finally get that communication between the parcel owner and, and the county, and that's what I'm looking for. Getting a phone number, an email address, communicating, trying to work out a payment plan, trying to figure out what their problem is. I mean, life happens. People die, people get sick, you lose your job, divorces. I, I will give all the grace I can, if you show me that you're working to solve this problem. And then a judge will tell me, okay, Pete, you've, you've given this individual enough time. Sorry, we need to foreclose. So I just do what, what our court system and, and our, our due process tells me I need to do. I'm following state statute. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner MacLeod.
Thank you, Chair. Quick question. So thanks for all the work you're doing to reach out to residents to ensure that they are able to make arrangements if they are able to do so. Just a quick question in terms of, like, what is the percentage between commercial versus residential in this equation?
It, it's mostly residential. I would say 95% residential. I mean, if, if you're in a commercial situation, now, it, it could be closer to 90 if you consider rental properties commercial, which, which we do. They're taxed as if they're commercial. So there's a lot of people who own multiple homes who also struggle. My solution is sell one of your homes. Your business plan isn't working. Let's, let's work this through and, and start from scratch. But I would say the majority, the high majority is going to be residential, which, which, that's the heartbreaking part, because we don't want to take homes away from people.
All right. This is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 42, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Diaz.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Boojak.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yeses, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 42 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll now move to item 8B, and I will call on Commissioner MacLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 43 of today's date, transfer ownership of former Sheriff's North Substation to Tyrone Township and parcel split, coming to us from facilities.
Very good. Is there support for that motion? Supported by Commissioner Antor. Questions or comments on this one? All right. If not, this is a voice vote. All those that support the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Those that oppose, say no. It is approved. I move to item 8C, and I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 44 of today's date, 2024 Low Income Home Energy Assistance Programs, Weatherization Assistant Program, funding from the Community Action.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Wooden. Questions or comments on this one? I don't see any. So, Madam Clerk, this is a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 44, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Diaz.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Boojak.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yeses, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 44 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to item 8D, and I will call on Commissioner Oliver King.
Thank you, Chair. I move that Resolution 45 of today's date, Local Water Utility Affordability Program, Fiscal Year 2024, brought to us by Community Action.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Legrand. Questions or comments on this one? I see none. This is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 45, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Diaz.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Boojak.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yeses, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 42 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll now move to item 8B, and I will call on Commissioner MacLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 43 of today's date, transfer ownership of former Sheriff's North Substation to Tyrone Township and parcel split, coming to us from facilities.
Very good. Is there support for that motion? Supported by Commissioner Antor. Questions or comments on this one? All right. If not, this is a voice vote. All those that support the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Those that oppose, say no. It is approved. I move to item 8C, and I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 44 of today's date, 2024 Low Income Home Energy Assistance Programs, Weatherization Assistant Program, funding from the Community Action.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Wooden. Questions or comments on this one? I don't see any. So, Madam Clerk, this is a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 44, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Diaz.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Boojak.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yeses, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 42 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll now move to item 8B, and I will call on Commissioner MacLeod.
Resolution 44 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to item 8D and I will call on Commissioner Oliver King.
Thank you, Chair. I move that Resolution 45 of today's date, Local Water Utility Affordability Program, fiscal year 2024, brought to us by Community Action.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner LaGrand. Questions or comments on this one? I see none. This is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 45, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
LaGrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Diaz.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Burl.
Boojack.
Yes.
Breevy.
Baker.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 48 is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to item 8H and I will again call on Commissioner Oliver King.
Thank you, Chair. I move the approval of Resolution 49, Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant Application for Two Rivers Parks, brought to us by the Parks Department.
Supported by Commissioner Boojack. We've already had some conversation about this. Any other comments or questions on this one? Commissioner Boojack.
Thank you, Chair Stack. Just a little comment about my support for parks in general. When I was a young man, I worked for the Cleveland Metropolitan Park System and very understanding of the beauty of parks and the workings inside of an operation managing park. So my love for parks certainly comes from my past, but I want to speak to this particular piece of property. It is in my District 21. This property is a county gem. We have the confluences of Two Rivers here, hence the name Two River Park.
Thank you for that.
We're looking at the Coldwater River and the Thornapple River. And historically, this is a very historical place. This was the dwelling place of the Potawatomi Chief Sundago. And when the white settlers first came, there was a thriving community of Indians living in this particular area. Not only that, at this particular area, there is a bald eagle that has a nest. So the bald eagle even thinks it's an important place to live. And the county has been working with Caladonia Township for many, many years on this particular project in purchasing land. And last year, we approved $150,000 of investment in partnership with Caladonia Township to purchase the last piece of property necessary to finish the acquisition of land. And now the next phase of the project is the grant application. So very exciting. This is a county treasure. It's truly a county treasure. And someday you will all have an opportunity to go out there with Mr. Swayze's help and put your kayaks in there, go fishing, and do all kinds of things that they're planning out there. Beautiful piece of property.
Thank you for that. Anything else? If not, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 49er, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
LaGrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Diaz.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Burl.
Boojack.
Yes.
Breevy.
Baker.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 48 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll now move to item 8H and I will again call on Commissioner Oliver King.
Thank you, Chair. I move the approval of Resolution 49, Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant Application for Two Rivers Parks, brought to us by the Parks Department.
Supported by Commissioner Boojack. We've already had some conversation about this. Any other comments or questions on this one? Commissioner Boojack.
Thank you, Chair Stack. Just a little comment about my support for parks in general. When I was a young man, I worked for the Cleveland Metropolitan Park System and very understanding of the beauty of parks and the workings inside of an operation managing park. So my love for parks certainly comes from my past, but I want to speak to this particular piece of property. It is in my District 21. This property is a county gem. We have the confluences of Two Rivers here, hence the name Two River Park.
Thank you for that.
We're looking at the Coldwater River and the Thornapple River. And historically, this is a very historical place. This was the dwelling place of the Potawatomi Chief Sundago. And when the white settlers first came, there was a thriving community of Indians living in this particular area. Not only that, at this particular area, there is a bald eagle that has a nest. So the bald eagle even thinks it's an important place to live. And the county has been working with Caladonia Township for many, many years on this particular project in purchasing land. And last year, we approved $150,000 of investment in partnership with Caladonia Township to purchase the last piece of property necessary to finish the acquisition of land. And now the next phase of the project is the grant application. So very exciting. This is a county treasure. It's truly a county treasure. And someday you will all have an opportunity to go out there with Mr. Swayze's help and put your kayaks in there, go fishing, and do all kinds of things that they're planning out there. Beautiful piece of property.
Thank you for that. Anything else? If not, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 49er, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
LaGrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Diaz.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Burl.
Boojack.
Yes.
Breevy.
Baker.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 49er is adopted.
Thank you. For our last resolution of the day, I will call on Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's my pleasure to move Resolution 50 of today's date, Appointment to Jury Commission, which comes to us from the Board Office.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Sparks. Questions or comments on this one? I see none. This is a voice vote. All those that support the motion say yes.
Yes.
Those that oppose say no. It is approved. Very good. All right. Let's move to our next item on the agenda, which is the second opportunity for public comment. If you wish to address the Board of Commissions with respect to a matter that is within our general jurisdiction, you may do so at this time. You have up to three minutes if you would identify yourself by your name and your address. And we will proceed. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Rodney Perry. I had something prepared, but it was nice to be able to hear County Treasurer being here and so eloquently putting his efforts to help people in the community with their delinquent property taxes. I find it difficult to understand how he can express such things because he never came to my house. I have a letter here, and it's not just allegations with this. I have a letter here assuring me that my properties would be withheld, both of them, from the 2021 foreclosure. That was a letter from him. But then two weeks later, he forecloses and doesn't tell me. Even though there is a plan in place for these payment arrangements, excuse me, he rejected a full payment of $70,782.42, two weeks after the final payment date in March 31st. The full payment. But there's payment arrangements that are allowed up to 2026. But he's making an effort to help people, his office. I find it hard to understand how he can lie to me, then turn around and lie on a probate register in probate court, because both my properties were in probate court. They didn't seek him. He sought them. He came after my properties. So if I sound angry, excuse me, I am. I now, oh, that's right, I didn't give you my address. I live where I parked my car. I have zero mortgage, none, on either property. About $800,000 worth of property. I get absolutely nothing except an exit. Get out. That's it. That's the effort. It sounds good. These sounds bites sound good. But the reality is, the documents don't lie. I can stand here and tell you a whole lot of things, token heat, he just did. But the documents don't lie. Now, he could have chosen a way of correction. He chose corruption. Complicity. I sent you all the documents, some of you, most of you. And one of the questions were, how come you didn't pay the tax? I did. The last tax I paid was $5,447 on a tax that was supposed to be $1,248, and I couldn't get my money back. The overpayment. And I've been doing that since 1994. And they refused to correct it. Now, he gave a sworn affidavit to a court, which he withheld from the judge, that letter that he gave me. That's fraud. He gave a sworn affidavit that all the taxes, all of the property stuff was valid.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's perjury. I got that too.
Anyone else? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Ida Nojani, and I'm here on behalf of the Kent County Office of the Defender. Just to give you a little bit of background, on March 18th of 2024, County Administrator Al Vandenberg, along with two other county employees, walked into our nonprofit and informed us that they were no longer going to renew our contract to represent the indigent citizens of this community. And in response to that information, based on a report that we had not yet received or reviewed, our Board of Directors has the following statement. "To our valued stakeholders, partners, volunteers, and the community we serve, the Kent County Office of the Defenders, the KCOD as we refer to it, and its Board of Directors, received and carefully reviewed the findings of a recent National Association of Public Defenders Kent County Indigent Defense Assessment Report. We take these findings very seriously and are committed to full transparency and accountability in addressing the concerns raised. Since 1974, the purpose of the Kent County Office of the Defenders is and always has been to secure justice for and protect the rights of the residents of Kent County, Michigan, who are unable to obtain and pay for criminal legal services by providing legal representation and counsel for such persons. We are proud to have dedicated staff of attorneys, mitigation specialists, which include social workers, investigators, and support staff who deliver this promise every day. The report does not find that KCOD's representation was lacking. In fact, the report states that, and in quote, "The office encourages a holistic and client-centered approach to their representation." Interviewees reported that they feel that the KCOD has a group of excellent and passionate attorneys, investigators, and mitigation specialists who care about their mission. However, the report did point out areas where we could improve our internal operations. We see this report not as a setback, but as a valuable opportunity for growth and improvement. Several improvement actions items were already being addressed before the report was released I, I sent you all the documents, some of you, most of you, and one of the questions were, how come you didn't pay the tax? I did. The last tax I paid was $5,447 on a tax that was supposed to be $1,248, and I couldn't get my money back. The overpayment. And I've been doing that since 1994, and they refused to correct it. Now, he gave a sworn affidavit to a court, which he withheld from the judge, that letter that he gave me. That's fraud. He gave a sworn affidavit that all the taxes, all the property stuff was valid.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's perjury.
I got that too.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Aiden O'Johnny, and I'm here on behalf of the Kent County Office of the Defender. Just to give you a little bit of background, on March 18th of 2024, County Administrator Al Vandenberg, along with two other county employees, walked into our nonprofit and informed us that they were no longer going to renew our contract to represent the indigent citizens of this community. And in response to that information, based on a report that we had not yet received or reviewed, our Board of Directors has the following statement. "To our valued stakeholders, partners, volunteers, and the community we serve, the Kent County Office of the Defenders, the KCOD as we refer to it, and its Board of Directors, received and carefully reviewed the findings of a recent National Association of Public Defenders Kent County Indigent Defense Assessment Report. We take these findings very seriously and are committed to full transparency and accountability in addressing the concerns raised. Since 1974, the purpose of the Kent County Office of the Defenders is and always has been to secure justice for the, for and protect the rights of the residents of Kent County, Michigan, who are unable to obtain and pay for criminal legal services by providing legal representation and counsel for such persons. We are proud to have dedicated, we are proud to have dedicated staff of attorneys, mitigation specialists, which include social workers, investigators, and support staff who deliver this promise every day. The report does not find that KCOD's representation was lacking. In fact, the report states that, and in quote, "The office encourages a holistic and client-centered approach to their representation. Interviewees reported that they feel that the KCOD has a group of excellent and passionate attorneys, investigators, and mitigation specialists who care about their mission." However, the report did point out areas where we could improve our internal operations. We see this report not as a setback, but as a valuable opportunity for growth and improvement. Several improvement actions items were already being addressed before the report was released to the Board of KCOD. Conflicts was one of the issues. The report noted no official conflict for ident, no official policy for identifying and handling case conflicts. Shortly after the National Association of Public Defenders conducted their interviews and months before we received the report, KCOD had already implemented an official policy to identify conflicts and potential conflicts of interest and act upon them. Training. The report also recommends a training director position, which could be responsible for implementing onboarding, continuing training, and mentoring. KCOD also views continued training as vital to providing excellent representation and has a training director position since 2020. We have also, we have also had our staff members asked to present a trainers, as trainers throughout the state of Michigan. We will continue to ensure our staff will receive additional training and maintain effective zealous representation." Just a few more minutes. We have always strived to improve all aspects of our organization, and we've grown from 17 to 50 employees. We believe there should be a separation of power.
A lot, 15 more seconds.
Between government. We firmly believe, thank you, Chair, we firmly believe that the citizens of Kent County are best served by an organization dedicated to providing outstanding representation, independent from the same government entity that is prosecuting them. Continuing to use an independent organization and other private attorneys who show the same commitment will better serve this community. We do not want our community members to be standing next to an attorney to represent their freedom, who's also being paid by those who are to charge them. So we ask you to consider these matters.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Good morning.
Good morning. Chairman Stack. Missed you two weeks ago. Nice tan, though.
Thank you. I'd say I missed you, but I was having a good time.
All right. Daniel Scutt. Of course, longtime resident of Kent County and my true identity is I'm a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. I'm sorry I missed your invocation, Commissioner. I'll check it on the video. As most of you know, I'm usually here to share about the gruesome and bloody murder of our innocent children in and now without of the womb, which many call abortion. But this morning, I'm here to share briefly about another gruesome and bloody murder, the murder of the Lord Jesus Christ. Holy Scriptures declare that our sins put him there. All of our sins. All of us are sinful. And because he went willingly and shed his innocent blood for all of our sins, we can receive forgiveness of every single sin, past, present, and future, thus gain eternal life. There's only one condition, and it's not belonging to a religion, not being baptized, not keeping the Ten Commandments, not taking the Eucharist, or as some call it, the Lord's Supper. In fact, listen to Jesus' own words. "For God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten Son, that whosoever believes in him shall not perish, but have everlasting life. God sent not his Son into the world to condemn the world, but that the world through him might be saved. He that believes on him is not condemned, but he that believes not is condemned already because he has not believed in the name of the only begotten Son of God." During this time of year, do not be distracted by eggs, bunny rabbits, religious processions, pomp and ceremony, but remember that the Lord Jesus Christ comes, came to die for our sins, was resurrected three days later, and lives forever. Buddha is dead, Hare Krishna is dead, Mohammed is dead, Jim Jones is dead, but Jesus Christ is alive. And trust in him today, and he'll give you eternal life. Our whole county would be better because of that.
Thank you. Anyone else? I see no one else. Okay. We will now move to the administrators' report. Call on our administrator.
Yes, just a couple items today. We are making progress on all strategic initiatives of the board. Perhaps you can see that most starkly at the site of the former State Police Crime Lab, which is now gone. So I hoped in my weekly update to have a before, during, and after picture of that event. Also, interestingly, as you know, we did approve the moving of the John Ball statue. That happened last week. I do have a few pictures of that that we can share. I really hope to be there because it was put there in the mid-1920s and moved in the 50s. However, it is outside of the fence again, and so people will be able to access that. And I think most people have taken pictures of their kids with John Ball over the years. So I think that'll be a good addition. Also, Kent 2050 is really moving along well. I'm sure in your inbox, you've seen the opportunity to fill out a survey. We also sent that to our 90,000 stakeholder, 90,000-person stakeholder list, and we received 14,000 replies back already. And it basically just asks to rank some ideas that have come out of that process. And so I hope you take the opportunity to take a look at that and, and also do that activity. So that's it for today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Now move to reports, if any commissioner has a report to make. And Commissioner DeBoer, you were first.
Thank you, Chair. I have a new committee assignment this year. I'm on Veterans Services, and I just wanted to let you guys know, I did put a press release about the Memorial Day Parade in your mailbox, and the United Veterans Council of Kent County is making some changes this year. It's going to be on the Saturday before Memorial Day at 10:00 a.m. You are all invited and encouraged to attend and also encourage you to inform your communities and let them know we'd love your presence to show your respect and to those who have served and who have given the ultimate sacrifice. So we'd love to see you there and feel free to share this with your communities however you'd like. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Woodin?
Thank you, Chair. The Kent County Brownfield Authority Board met for the first time since its creation. This is a board that Commissioner Green and I are fortunate to serve on. Our opening session, we held deliberations on your normal opening session items, namely bylaws and founding documents. Just one thing to throw, to share with you all is there may be some revisions to our bylaws, namely whether or not to have a self-imposed limit on the number of terms a authority board member can sit on or can serve, and that may need to come back to the commission. Council's reviewing that. So there may be revisions to those documents that have to come back to the board. If they do, we'll make sure that they get on the agenda at an appropriate time. And, you know, other than that, it was a good first meeting.
Thank you. And thank you for your service, as well as Vice Chair Green. Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Chair. I've got two quick things from the Grand Valley Metro Council Policy Committee, which met last week Wednesday. The first is that the Grand Valley Metro Council is now in the public comment phase of the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, the MTP. And for everybody in Kent County, your feedback is welcome and appreciated. Folks can visit that and provide comments on the website, gbmc.org/mtp. And that is open until, I actually don't know when it's open until, I don't have a clarity on that. The second is, just a reminder that MDOT is going to be performing major construction repair to the northbound lanes of US 131, starting this Sunday, March 31st. The anticipated timeline for the complete closure of northbound lanes is about two months, and then they'll flip it to do the closure of southbound lanes between 28th Street and Pearl. It's a significant project to repair some damage over the Plaster Creek area.
Wait, are you saying that MDOT is starting a construction project on 131 on Easter?
They are. Yes.
Just wanted to know.
Yes. I'm just the messenger on that one. But as with any project, it could change timelines.
Good. Thank you. Any other reports? If not, let's move to miscellaneous. Any commissioner have a miscellaneous item? And Commissioner Boojack, please.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to thank all my fellow commissioners for all the well wishes that I've received regarding a speedy recovery from my rotor cuff surgery. I was involved in an auto accident and had a torn rotor cuff, which was repaired last week Wednesday. And surprisingly, through the modern miracles of medicine, I feel no pain, and I'm on, well on the way to recovery, and I anticipate a full recovery. So thank you to my fellow commissioners for the well wishes.
Did your lawyer know you made that statement? All right. Mr. Pakla.
Thank you, Chair. I've got two notes. First is, I was pleased to participate in the Region 12 Science Olympiad Tournament at Grand Valley State University this past weekend. There are a number of teams in Kent County that are now moving on to the state Science Olympiad Tournament, so I wanted to congratulate them. West Michigan Aviation Academy, Byron Center High School, Plymouth Christian High School, Grace Christian Academy, East Grand Rapids High School, East Grand Rapids Middle School, and Chandler Woods Charter Academy all made the top teams and are headed on to that state tournament later next month. The second is, I'm going to don some really stylish glasses for just a second to show them off, but it's a quick reminder that on Monday, April 8th, we will be experiencing here in Kent County a near-total solar eclipse. Here in Grand Rapids, we'll experience about 93.53% coverage of the sun. If you want to get to 100%, you've got to drive about four and a half hours south is the closest way to get there. Starting about 1:55 p.m., reaches max coverage about 3:11 p.m., and then it ends at about 4:24 p.m. So there's a number of events around town. The Grand Rapids Public Museum is going to be hosting a big event downtown at the Blue Bridge. Encourage folks to get out there and enjoy that spectacle, but make sure that you have safe viewing glasses like these ones when you get out there.
Those are attractive. All right. Let's see. Commissioner Antor?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to wish everybody a happy and blessed Easter coming up on Sunday. Also, today is opening day for the Detroit Tigers, which is kind of a holiday in my mind. And then, let me see, what else did I have? I think that was it. So anyhow, most importantly, I hope everybody has a really blessed Easter and remember what that day is all about, because we tend to get into the candy and the eggs and all that, like the pastor mentioned. But this is the greatest day on the Christian calendar, in my opinion, is Easter. So thank you.
All right. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Stack. I'll be brief so I get back into the good graces of Vice Chair Green. So one only needs to open the paper, watch the news, and for a lot of people, there's people around that have just given up hope. And I know as an organization, Kent County has many tentacles, and we reach out when and where we can to try to give people hope. But I just want to remind folks that there is hope, and for those who celebrate Easter on Sunday, that hope is still alive. We've just got to remember that, you know, we're all in this together, and, and one life isn't lesser than another life. And so I just hope everyone has a great weekend. Hopefully, the snow stays away and it's sunshine, and everyone can enjoy the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. Couple of quick items. Kent County Community Action has posted their Land Hazard Control Project Supervisor position. So if you, if any of the commissioners, any of you commissioners know anybody who would be a good fit for that position, please reach out to KCCA. I know that that work outside of Grand Rapids is very important. The quicker they can find somebody to lead that effort, the better off our constituents will be. Secondly, I'm thankful to the, I want to make sure I get the name correct, the, thankful to the officers' compensation, commission determination, or the committee that decides that, to increase the wages for commissioners and for county employees. I will, myself, will not be here after this term, but I think it's important to make sure that we're doing all we can to have these positions be available and be an option for working-class people. If you increase the wages, then it just removes another barrier for more working-class people to be able to consider running for these positions. So, so that's great to see that. And then lastly, if I'm not mistaken, the reconstruction for the portion of Godfrey High School that collapsed almost five years ago is pretty much complete. It'll be, the building is reconstructed, and they're finishing up a couple of small details here and there, but by the end of the school year, that will be completely redone. As many of you all know, a section of that roof collapsed the summer of 2019. So almost five years later, they're still working on completing that, but God willing, that will be complete in the next couple of weeks. So really glad to hear that. And as many of you have said, have a good weekend. Looking forward to seeing you all again.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. I don't see anyone else. Just a couple of things. First of all, just a reminder that we do have a CIP work session starting, in theory, at 10 o'clock. We'll probably take a good 15-minute break before we reconvene, so we'll probably reconvene about 10 after 10. That works for staff to do that. And then, yes, following up on my colleagues, wish all of you a blessed Easter celebration. Acknowledging Pastor Scott, a three-point sermon in less than three minutes, that is to be emulated. Very good. But otherwise, enjoy your Easter weekend, and we will see you next time. With that, I will call on Commissioner Coleman, who's chomping at the bit.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn, subject to the call of the chair, to Thursday, April the 18th, at 8:30 a.m.
It is supported. I suspect all those in favor is that yes, we are adjourned.